So Louise, can I get a copy since I gave mine to JJ?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out if there are... you said one of each?
There's two separate pages. This is Curry County.
Yep.
Thank you.
These are the two sure transit.
These are transit, so there should have been... that's not transit.
Yes.
That's Curry County.
I've got two, three... I have three transit districts pages.
There you go.
Okay, I got a transit and a transit.
Okay, Chris.
Why don't you give... what were your transit?
Well, I got two small ones.
You got a transit book?
I want a big one.
Both transits?
And.
We're doing transit first, right?
There's two pieces.
To the transit.
To the transit.
That's what I got, two pieces.
We are... we are... we are like... seeing us clarify things, of course.
Thank you very much.
Making sure we have all our... the right information. Who wouldn't... who wouldn't want to see us making sure everything was correct?
The other one's county, we haven't had that one yet. Now we need the county one.
She said we're just going to do transit one.
We're going to... he wants to do the other one first, so. Let me do this.
Thank you, Louise.
We're zigging...
You screwed it up so bad.
My mom used to say, "You're zigging when you should be zagging."
I'm not going to pass it down.
I don't want that one.
I'm not going to pass it down.
I don't want it.
Do we budget for this paper?
Who's on first?
They provide it. So was there extra charge for the paper? They probably do charge.
Unless you ask for more than $5.30.
We can get all this in by... in 20 minutes?
So question, if we ask for less, do we get a discount? I'm serious.
Yeah, she sure.
Yes.
But if you are looking for discounts, we should definitely talk because there are a number of things that folks can do. Usually they don't want to, but they absolutely can.
I think we need to discuss that.
All righty, well, let's call this meeting to order. It is 2:04 PM on June 26th. This is our meeting about the budget for the Curry County financial report. Not budget, but the financial report for Curry County and also the financial report for the...
No, that's two separate meetings.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. We are doing a meeting for Curry County's financial report. So let's call this meeting to order. Do I have any changes to the agenda? Can I get approval, please?
I know that we approved the agenda as written. And so this would be for the Curry County Transit.
No, this is Curry County.
Curry County.
They switched up on us at the last minute. Can I get a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Any further discussion? Roll, please.
Hold.
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce.
Yes.
Chair Pash.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
I bet you think you really know what we're doing, don't you? It's your meeting.
Go ahead.
Oh, okay.
I don't have anything to say. I did all of it.
Honorable members of the board, my name is Pete and I am the audit manager working under Roy Rogers, who is the managing partner who actually signed the reports. And I am presenting the findings of the 2018 fiscal year audit report for Curry County to y'all. It's my pleasure to do so. You should have four documents, I think, in total in front of you. Two relate to the county, two relate to the transit district, which of course are separate legal entities, which is why all of this fun designation.
It only took us five minutes to figure it out.
You should have a... the non-bound kind of five-page packet. And that should say, "Communication to the governing body." And I find that's an excellent summary of what actually happened during the audit for us to kind of get a handle on everything. And then if you do have more technical questions, we can pop open the big thing. I can push up my glasses and we can get as audit-heavy and as accounting-heavy as you'd like. So I'll start with that communication to the governing body, one. For the county, the first page here is fairly boilerplate. This is standard legal language, which is basically explaining what the duties are of management versus the duties of the audit team and the two of us, how we kind of work together and speak to each other. I think we can skip that fairly easily and move on to page two. Page two has the scope and timing, again, very standard, just depends on when the fiscal year's over and what have you. But we get into the meat of things in the next section, results of audit. For those of you who've been through this process and this presentation before, you may be aware that there are actually multiple audits that a county of your size gets. There's the regular financial audit, then there's also the Oregon minimum standards audit, and finally, there's the federal or the single audit when you have grants over a certain dollar size. And you definitely got all three here. So, starting with number one, the audit opinion letter. This is the basis of our opinion for the financial statements themselves. Unmodified opinion for the basic financial statements has been issued. That's exactly what you're looking for, so right off the bat, we're feeling good. I will say that there's a slight asterisk on that. We did issue what's called a qualified opinion, and that's because there is discreetly presented component unit 4H, which we did not see an audited set of financials for, so we just take no opinion on it. But it doesn't mean that our opinion's bad on anything, it's just we take no opinion.
I thought I gave you that.
Was it audited?
They do their own audit.
They do their own audit?
Yes, the 4H does, and they sent me a copy, and I thought I sent you a copy.
You definitely sent us a copy, but we didn't see... Let's see here. Well, we can get into the legal language. Included in the aggregate discreetly presented component units is 4H, an extension service district, which we did not audit. The district's financial activities are included in the county's base of financial statements as discreetly presented component units. So we're just saying that we made no audit opinion. Fair point, fair point indeed.
So question, does that demean?
No, not at all. And that's why I just wanted to put that asterisk, for it says, "An unmodified opinion." That's the good one, and that's what y'all got, which is exactly where you want to be. So number two, state minimum standards, Oregon minimum standards. We found no exceptions or issues requiring comment, except as noted on page 121 of the report. That's also exactly what you're looking for, we'll talk a little bit more about that later. But if there was anything big, we'd have to state it here on number two. Moving on to number three, federal awards. We found two issues of non-compliance, no question costs. For those of you who remember last year, that is an improvement, which is very nice to see. And then finally, number four, a management leisure. We did not issue a separate management letter, and that's because when you have a single audit, those findings automatically go in the financial statements. So again, we'll talk a little bit more about that as we go through things.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
Are the audits that you're... like you're saying, we found two issues. Are they subjective or are they mandated by law?
So, they are mandated by GAAP, generally accepted accounting principles, which we have to follow. So, yeah, I guess you'd say it's mandated by law.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So moving on to this next section, significant audit findings. That's a little bit of a misnomer. In this context, all we're saying is what changed? Every year, the rules tend to change. Governmental Accounting Standards Board, GASB, they're the ones who kind of set the rules for how we do meaningful audits. And whenever they change the rules, we want to point that out. So the thing that changed in this year was GASB 75. It has to do with how post-employment benefits other than pensions. So these are your non-PERS post-employment benefits, how those had to be reported. There was no major impact to the county, so there wasn't much to say there, which is great. Moving on to page three. Page three is where we really get into the narrative discussion of the audit itself. When we interacted with management, when we came by and bugged them twice a year, when we were rifling through all their files, when we're sending emails back and forth, uploading documents, did we agree on terms? You know, were they defining cash the way that we define cash? Investments the way we define investments? Were we speaking the same language? Were we getting things in a timely manner? All those types of things. And if there were problems, we'd need to talk about that here on page three. But if you go through and look at this specifically, each of these paragraphs will say things like, "No difficulties, we got all things in a timely manner, we didn't have any major disagreements with management." So just down the list, clean, clean, clean. Looking pretty good here on number... page three. So moving on to page four. Page four, we get into this thing called best practices, and I'd like to return to that in just a moment because first of all, I think it's a misnomer. I think we've talked about this before. But I would like to start with what I think is a little bit more worthy of y'all's attention. And that's the findings in the back, which are the ones that relate to single audit. So in the actual bound report, on page 128, you will see a section of financial statement findings. So this is the big one, and it's page 128. So as auditors, we can issue a clean opinion or a somewhat non-clean opinion, shall we say. That's kind of our biggest tool that we give, that anyone could get an idea of what's going on without getting much more detail. Below that, we can still give a clean opinion, but then say some things in different levels of severity. So the most severe that doesn't change an opinion would be a material weakness. And a material weakness is basically us as auditors saying, we see something that could have an effect on the numbers in the financials, so much so that it could materially affect it, meaning that someone might come to a different conclusion, an educated reader of the financials. We did not find any material misstatements this year, and that's a significant improvement from the year before, which is great. The next step down is a significant deficiency, less severe than a material weakness. It usually has to do with internal control. And it's us as auditors saying, we see something that looks like it could have an issue, but we see no actual issue. So it's kind of like seeing a hole in a fence. There's nothing passing through that we're seeing, but there is a hole and we just want to point it out. So there are a few significant deficiencies. These are almost all, I believe they're all actually repeats of prior year. So, starting with number one here, finding 2018-001, significant deficiency in internal controls, segregation of duties, the most common one. And this is extremely common when you don't have a large and complex accounting department.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
What page you on?
128, right at the top.
Still at 128, okay.
Section two, yeah.
So, all this is saying, in the... if you go down to the conditions section, is it's basically talking about four kind of specific issues. These were the exact same from the prior year. So for instance, the personnel coordinator has both emergency authority as a check signer and also physical access to check stock. The personnel coordinator may investigate and correct a time card without a review process. The building department admin assistant is involved in multiple phases of the billing function for small permit fees. There is actually a really strong system of internal controls in place for large permit fees. And additionally, the road department office manager is able to perform inventory changes without approval or review. So no actual problems were found, nothing was found that caught attention to us that we needed to call it out to you, but these are just areas where there's increased risk. So we want to say, this is a significant deficiency, so all we're doing is pointing that out. That's all that's going on with 2018 finding 001. Moving on to page 129, finding 002. All this is really saying, and complex citations to single audit codification, is basically just that the single audit wasn't submitted in the timeframe that the Fed likes it. The Fed likes to get it by March 31st, and it was submitted a little after. And I will say, much to the county's credit, that it was a many-month improvement from the prior year. So we're really moving in an excellent direction. And the counties, as y'all are aware, since you steer the ship here, it's an extremely complex mesh of many different organizations, right? It's the port, it's the airport, well, it used to be, it's the sheriff's office. It's... you know, there's all kinds of different entities all coming together, getting them all to get their numbers to someone to actually put into financial statements, getting that done on time. Usually you can move that maybe a month either place. So the fact that it moved multiple months in one year, that's a really nice step in a positive direction. And if this trend continues, that means that the next year, this wouldn't be a finding anymore, which would be fantastic. So that's all that's saying on 129. Moving on to page 130, significant deficiency in property tax assessment. Again, this is the same as the year before. And all we're really saying here is that the county didn't have resources to assess the value of properties and ensure property taxes properly controlled on a regular basis. So we're certainly seeing that it's happening, and we see plenty of evidence that all the calculations are being run, you know, in ways that we can recalculate and it look okay. But we don't see that it's happening on a regular basis in the timeframe that you would hope for for a county. So the only obvious way to solve that is of course, hire more folks and have them do more assessment.
We just did that.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Well, there we go. So next year, that potentially will be going away. But also, as I'm sure y'all are aware, that's a significant expense. So it's certainly not for us to say, that's only for y'all to say. Finally, moving on to page 131. This is a little bit misleading, but it does say very specifically, finding 2017-003. So this is a finding that was not repeated, so this is something that fell off. Otherwise known as, "You did a great job, pats on backs, gold stars all around." What this is really saying here is that the airport grant used to have some issues with reporting things. That has since been taken care of, things are now humming along quite nicely. So that finding fell off from the prior year. So that's great. So those are the significant deficiency. Those are the things that we really want to draw folks' attention to. Then there is this other section, and we're now going back to the five-page non-bound report. And we'll look to that section on best practices. So best practice, as I mentioned before, a term that I personally really don't like. It's a term that's used in the audit industry, it's not just our firm that uses this, but I really wish that we could rename this "Communication of Risk." That's really what I feel this is here. All we're doing as auditors is saying, these are areas that have some level of risk. It's not for us to decide if that's okay or not, it's not for management to decide if that's okay or not. It's only for the board, only for y'all as county commissioners to decide if any of these are worthy of your attention or not. So number one, outstanding checks. During our testing of cash, we just saw that there were a few stale-dated checks. It was a very immaterial number, I believe it was like around $600. So really not a problem at all. Stale dated doesn't mean that they're missing or that they're bad or anything. It just means that the county issued them, and whoever they issued to isn't cashing them out. And when that happens for a number of years in a row, at a certain point, they're supposed to be kind of reclassified and turned over to Oregon unclaimed property. Yeah.
So why would we get dinged for that? Because we have no control over when someone cashes a county check?
Right, so you don't have control as a county, but after a certain number of years, Oregon unclaimed property is supposed to then take that so that it's no longer on the county's books as either a debit or a credit to cash, basically that has an effect on cash. It should be reclassified as a liability at that point.
Oh, so we should be turning them over to the state?
Exactly, exactly. And we do see evidence that that's happening, it's just there's a few, you know, that are over that cutoff.
It was one account.
Exactly, one account. So again, that's why it's in this lesser category. It's not something that we felt was a significant deficiency, and it definitely wasn't a material weakness. It's just this minimal section that we call best practices, and I wish we could just call "Communication of Risk." Moving on to number two, fidelity insurance coverage. I think y'all are used to this, we give this pretty much every year. And that's simply saying that we as auditors are looking at cash, and we compare that to fidelity, AKA employee honesty, AKA crime coverage, what y'all are insured for. And when there's a difference between those, we just point that out. Are you supposed to have full coverage for all of your cash? Absolutely not. It's definitely not for us to say, not for management to say, only for y'all to decide what the appropriate amount of coverage is.
Okay, seems we're talking about that. It was recommended today in conference with our treasurer that I speak to you about this.
Oh, okay.
And I want to preface this conversation with I make no accusations about anything happening, okay? No improprieties. Something that I saw, I've seen over the last few months, and I saw it again today, was cash being brought in from our parks.
Okay.
And the way it's done, to me, could be a liability for the county, and it could have accusations thrown at our parks director that he could be, you know, pocketing money from it. Let's say that very bluntly.
Okay.
Basically, they take the money out of the boxes, they put them in a plastic bag, which they're in sealed envelopes, and they bring them and give them to our treasurer.
Okay.
I mean, I hate to say this, but I worked on... I worked on Wall Street for a while, and they had a stern compliance department. They would definitely frown on doing that, they should... In other words, you could take 10 envelopes, stick them in your pocket, and say, "Okay, here's what was in the box," and forget about the ones that were in your pocket. So and again, I want to say, I'm not saying that that's happened. Another problem could be a robbery. People know that those boxes are being emptied and set you up for a robbery. Those could be thousands of dollars in those boxes.
Absolutely.
It was brought up to me of how to best handle that. Should we maybe get a box that we replace, you know, replaceable box system, that we unlock one box, take it off the post, put an empty box in, and bring the entire box in so that two people have to see it when it's opened? Or a different way, if you've dealt with that in the past? If you could recommend to us some possible other clients that you have that deal with cash and how they handle it? It's just a little scary for me that not only could our parks director get robbed, but also some, you know, improprieties could be accused of him or the county.
Sure. So the number one... oh, sorry.
I just want the public to know that it probably... I would really question if it would be very much money. And also our parks director, if anybody's thinking about robbing him out there, he packs, so. It's... I don't... I just want the public...
That's useful information for the public record.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, the worst picture in church history is a pastor getting in a car in the 40s with a box of money on his lap because they just handed to him and said, "Here..."
Take it to the bank.
It was Billy Graham taking it to the bank, and somebody snapped a picture and said, "There's your donation box." So that's what I don't want to happen.
Right. So there are very few things that I can speak to specifically because we have a limited scope as auditors, that we are only talking about the processes that we have audited, the processes that we understand, and also this thing called materiality, which I'm sure you've probably run into a few times. But let's start with the insurance itself, since that's how this came up. Insurance itself, specifically fidelity coverage, AKA crime coverage, is meant exactly to deal with any of these situations that you're bringing up. And as long as the amount is under the coverage level, then that's one of the easiest ways to feel good in the long term. Obviously, that doesn't feel good in the short term, and it certainly doesn't affect the optics or any of the other things that y'all are talking about. But in terms of the fidelity coverage, the insurance coverage, that amount, you would want to decide what is like the maximum or what's the average, you know, size of cash that is potentially changing hands, where things are potentially vulnerable, and then decide if the amount of insurance coverage that y'all have can handle that with enough turnover. And it sounds like it would be the case in this case. But as to ways to be more secure, when it comes to internal control, we as auditors always talk in terms of two different aspects of internal control. There's prevention, which is very difficult and costly, and there's detection, which is usually less so for both. So prevention and detection, two different aspects of internal control. I would say that the detection aspect would be the one that'd be easiest to focus on and get a higher reward for less outlay of capital. Literally, it could just be if someone has a few extra hours to assign them to run a couple studies on what's going on with that cash, how it's flowing through the system, what are the checks and balances in place, and then does that seem appropriate to the dollar amounts in place? And that could be done with very little outlay of time or money. The prevention aspect, I think, is what... folks tend to think about that more because that's... we all watch movies, we all watch TV, that's what's in our heads, right? Is those scenes from things where we've seen stuff go awry or been on the news. And those are definitely options, but they tend to be much more expensive.
I just...
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I just want to tell the public, the amount of money that's transported is very rare, and it's not very much.
All I'm trying to...
What's that?
I'm not saying it is a lot of money. All I'm saying is, if the public were to watch somebody open one of these boxes, and they take a bunch of envelopes out, it could be looked at wrongly. That's all I'm saying.
It is not rare, but it is getting less because we have started the online reservations.
Good.
So the amount of cash that's being collected at our county parks is a lot less because a lot of the reservations are made online and paid online.
I understand that.
So the cash amount has increased a lot since last year when we didn't have any online.
I know that.
Yeah.
I already know that, thank you.
Great.
I just wanted to say it for the record.
I didn't, so that is good clarification, and the point is, our parks people are not transporting a lot of cash. I want the public to understand that. Thank you.
Sure. So just kind of wrapping things up to tie all these various threads that were just discussed together. I think you're absolutely hitting on two different aspects of internal control, the prevention versus the detection. The detection, I think, would be absolutely worth some time to look into because it is usually so affordable to do so. The prevention things, changing a lockbox, changing actual procedures, hiring or changing duties, that's something that we have no authority to say, and that would definitely be between management and the board to decide what would be an appropriate course of action for that. Certainly, we can... if there are some, like, a menu of options, we'd be happy to provide some insight on that, but we certainly can't make any management decisions. That's one thing that we have to be very careful of as legal third-party operatives to not be involved in management decisions. So, moving on to number three, Form I-9 compliance. I've got good news here. We are in the middle of our interim audit for the next fiscal year. That's what Margaret and I are actually doing this week, bugging everyone at the county about. And in so doing, we have seen that this finding is about to fall off. So unless something surprising happens during the rest of the fiscal year, of which there's not too many days left, it looks like this will be going away. So basically, I-9s, in the prior year, we saw a few of those forms that were not fully completed, and we just normally like to see that, and this year, this is on track to go away. So good news there. Number four, governing body monitoring. This is a note that we give every year to every county, city, district that we work with, regardless of size or complexity. Basically, we are looking for three things when we look at minutes. We're looking for, is the board asking questions of management? Yes, we see plenty of evidence of that. Is management providing to the board financial data on a timely basis? Yes, we see plenty of evidence of that. The third thing that we look for is what's called external benchmarking. And it's something that doesn't have a lot of benefit according to many other districts and counties that we've worked with, where you're taking a snapshot of what happened at this county and comparing it to some other county. And you can imagine that there's a lot of differences. You know, there's different tax bases, there's different programs in place. So an apples-to-apples comparison becomes very difficult to get any useful information out of. So it's something that Wall Street does a lot, but municipal entities, governmental entities hardly ever do. It's not for us to say, though, and since it is a thing that we are supposed to look for, I personally don't think it should be, but it's not for me to say. GASB says to look for it, so we do, and we just point that out every year. So I am in no way suggesting that either management or the board decide to do external benchmarking. It is simply something that we look for on our three-pronged list of things in minutes. So are y'all supposed to do that? Absolutely not, that is completely the decision of the board and management, if y'all want to do that. Moving on to number five, intellectual property. This is something that Roy Rogers, our managing partner, having been a serving board member himself on many different organizations, has decided he wanted folks to be aware of. And it's simply saying that collections of people like yourselves tend to involve a good amount of brain power. There's usually some pretty smart ideas that tend to flow through large organizations, and eventually, some of those smart ideas can actually turn into something that is worth some dollars, can actually be classified as intellectual property. Usually, in government, in municipal environments, folks are pretty altruistic. It's only when they retire that there can be a legal question of, okay, well, whose process, you know, does this belong to? Whose idea does this technically belong to? So Roy just recommends that folks have a policy. You certainly don't have to, there's no GAAP requirement, there's no legal requirement that you do. Roy just recommends that you do because he'd rather be, you know, telling folks about the ways to be as safe as possible. And keep in mind, too, that you don't have to have a policy like on Wall Street, you know, where it's like, anything that's created is ours, and that's the end of the story. You could go the other way and say, "If it's created on county property using county assets, you know, we'll figure it out," or "It's yours," you know? There's just a range, it's just to have a policy can be helpful. Is it required? No. Do you need to spend any time on this at all? Not at all. Moving on to number six, journal entries. The treasurer's office makes adjusting journal entries based on their own review process of adjusting journal entries submitted by department heads regarding adjustments to revenue. While rare, those adjusting entries are not reviewed by someone independent of the process. So the standard adjusting entry, which is when accountants go into the books and say, "Okay, we need to change a number here," that's a very standard and well-documented process that we as auditors take a pretty significant look at every year. And we want to make sure that any change shows that it's being approved, and we see that. But we do see that there is this one case where it might not happen, so we're simply pointing that out.
It is happening now.
And it is happening now.
I didn't know it was happening until now.
Well, there we go.
There we go.
So it looks like that'll be dropping off. So moving to number seven, a minimum number of appropriated funds. This is on the next page, final page, we're almost through.
We're no hurry, you're doing fine.
Number seven, number of appropriated funds. This has to do with the financial statements, not necessarily the budget. So this is not recommending that any funds be taken away or changed, but simply both Gatsby, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, and the GFOA both recommend that there be a very small minimum number of funds presented in the financials. Whoever is the finance director who we're going to be working with next, we can talk to them about some ways that this may be able to be done, so that this could be removed. But again, it's just a guideline. There's no penalty. There's no real problem. There's no law against it. It's just a preference. Moving to number eight, capital assets.
I just wanted to say on that, we did during our budget process combine like amount, like funds into one fund.
Oh.
So we did combine all admin services into one fund because like admin services for commissioners was a separate fund from the other admin services.
Right.
The reserve funds are all now under one fund number.
Okay.
And internal service funds are all under one fund number.
Great.
So we did do that during the budget process because it involves transferring ending fund balances to the new fund.
Well, that seems like good internal housekeeping. That's not exactly what the GFOA or Gatsby are talking about. They're talking more about those pages in the financials, the overall balance sheet and the overall statement of revenues, changes in expenditures and fund balance, and where it's just general debt service, capital projects, just rolling everything into those.
That's also what we did during this adoption last week. We have two appropriation levels, general fund with their personnel services and materials and services, capital outlay, and then all other special revenue funds.
Great.
So I think that'll help also on the audit, and I think that's another thing that you guys were talking about.
Yeah. So we won't know until we see the new trial balance, but it sounds like you're on the right track again, so that's great. Moving on to number eight, capital assets. We test capital assets in a significant amount. We look at additions, we look at deletions, we look at recalculating depreciation, a lot of different aspects of capital assets, and everything looks good. The only thing we're pointing out here is that we didn't see that the county has a way to periodically reevaluate capital asset lives. And the specific thing that we're talking about here is, when you have such a wide breadth and depth of stuff of capital assets, be it land, be it vehicles, equipment, whatever, when there's a lot of things in a lot of places, quite often, the more complex and sizable that is, the more likely something may be what we refer to as impacted.
Everything just went down.
Yeah, the power in here shut too?
No, it flickered. Is that an IMP?
I'm not sure. Everything in this room is shut off, everything. So I have to restart everything, and it sounds like some kind of backup.
Okay, but we've got the recorder here, so we can keep going in here, I think.
Thank you.
Okay.
We didn't hear the generator kick on, did we?
I hear a loud.
Yes, there.
Sounds like a. The alarm's in there going off.
Yeah. Okay. So, yeah, the only thing that we were saying is that sometimes capital assets could be impacted, which means that, you know, something that you expected to last for 20 years might now only last five because of storm damage or something like that. So that's all we're talking about here, is that we didn't see that there's that there's a policy to reevaluate that. And again, that's usually due to manpower. And so there's no easy way to deal with that without an outlay of capital. So we're not saying that you need to do anything different. It's just pointing out, again, a little area of risk. Moving on to number nine, board minutes. Talking about minutes themselves, and this is for both the county and the transit district and.
4H.
The 4H, which is 4H plus, right? It's more than just.
4H and extension.
There we go. I knew there was more to it. So for those minutes, that they are not always being presented or posted in a timely manner. We've come a long way. I've been here for a little bit, and I've seen some major improvement in this area. But we do like to see as auditors, in fact, we're required by GAAP, by AICPA, to look at minutes, and so if they're not all posted, we can't really fully do our job. So we're just noting that. That's all that's going on there with number nine. Moving on to number 10, system reconciliations. This is having to do with the road department and their inventory. The road department basically has a system in place to change inventory. When they make a change, we're not seeing evidence of review and approval. So it's not that the changes that are happening are not good. It's just we're not seeing someone sign off on those changes. Again, why we're just this section of kind of minimal areas of risk to talk about, not a significant deficiency, not a material weakness. And finally, IT controls. This is a new one for this year. This is one that Roy Rogers wanted to communicate to everyone at the end of this year. And the reason why is, for those of you who follow what goes on with the Fed and with grants, every year for the past couple decades, the Fed issues this thing called a compliance supplement, and it basically says, here's all the rules to follow to, you know, be in good standing to get your grants or what have you. There's a lot of different rules. You can imagine this thing's thick. It deals with like NASA and Department of Defense and everything. So it's a big, big, big thing. Last year, for the first time in recent memory, the Fed just didn't issue one. So we don't know exactly what was going on.
Forgive me. Please say that again, that.
So the Fed didn't issue a compliance supplement, which has to do with how folks are dealing with federal grant dollars. So in the absence of new rules from the Fed, every year, the Fed has different rules about how they want their grants to be, you know, used or not used. In the absence of those rules, we have to kind of rely on some hearsay from the Fed. So Roy Rogers has some good contacts at various levels of these organizations, of governing bodies, Governmental Accounting Standards Boards and whatnot. And basically, we are aware that the IT controls is one area that will be popping up next year. We don't know that for sure, but we wanted to let everyone know to pay a little bit of special attention to IT controls specifically, and that it will potentially affect federal funds in the future. We won't know until the new compliance supplement comes out that the Fed's issuing. The Fed is supposed to be issuing that in July, so real soon. And as soon as we know, we're immediately going to reach out to all the folks we work with and say, okay, here's the new rules. Until we do that, though, folks are advised to just take a look at their IT controls. That's all.
This meeting says.
Thanks. That's a little bit of an issue with me because we're changing, I'm going to guess, every three months. So you're suggesting that the federal government might say that's not near enough or not a good enough of a policy we have?
It's unknown at this point. So the Fed will issue that guidance in July, supposedly. And when they do so, they'll have whatever guidelines. They will apply only to specific grants. So for instance, it won't affect the entire county. It would just be for a certain federal grant where they say, okay, for this dollars, and it wouldn't be starting in fiscal year 1920, so this current fiscal year. It would be starting in the next one. So you'd have a full year to potentially change whatever needed to be changed for that specific grant. So for the county, there's not too many areas where this might apply in the near future.
No, what I have, though, is what Commissioner Boyce was referring to was signing on to our server. And that requires a password change every three months, I believe, four times a year.
Yeah, I was just making a guess there, so I got lucky.
And then, but it doesn't require any special characters.
Okay.
The other one that we have, and the ones I think the federal government is most concerned with, is our accounting software sign-ons, because that holds the information for the grants, the financial information for those grants. And we do not have a policy. We recently got some requests from the state regarding our federal monies that come through them for VOKA, which is Victims Assistance Monies. Though they are requiring a policy, and we have been looking at other counties to see if they have a policy yet that we might plagiarize with their permission.
1440, we are back online. Just wanted to make a record of that.
So that is something that we are in the process of doing, discovering what other counties are writing in their policies for this compliance with federal, compliance on IT securities and things like that. So something that's in the process, and basically, you know, Lynn County, I don't, they always have a lot of stuff.
You're laughing. Do you know the Lynn County Commissioners? Oh, yeah. Okay.
Because, I mean, they do these policies, and so a lot of times, I could probably get it from Lynn County or Benton County or one of the other ones that probably already have these policies in the works or already done. So that's what we're looking at to do this IT compliance.
That's exactly it. But I just want to point out that the main thing to take away is that there's no rule that needs to be followed yet because we don't know. These are merely suggestions until the Fed issues that new compliance supplement. That is the end of page five of five. That means that's the only part of the presentation that I really needed to get through, so I'd like to open it up for questions. Yeah?
When we started this meeting, you talked about being able to get discounts on the audit. So I'm going to zero in on that.
Absolutely. So one of the number-one ways to save a significant amount of dollars.
Significant meaning?
Many thousands.
Okay.
Is for the county to prepare its own financial statements. If the county has the ability to prepare their own financial statements, then we simply audit them, and we're done. And it also can cut down significantly on time to present those financials to whatever bodies are involved, be it the Fed or whatever granting agencies need to see them.
Okay, so we get a financial statement every month. I don't know whether that's in the right form. It's not. Okay.
So Louise could speak to this a little bit more than I could about the type of knowledge, skills, and experience required to make a county-wide set of financial statements, because it is fairly complex.
It's actually very complex, and there's a lot of things. I don't even know how they figure out and put on those financial statements. So, I mean, they have some kind of formulas or something. But I've talked to Roy Rogers about it, and he says it's, if you do your own financial statements, you need a lot of experience of doing the financial statements the way the countywide type stuff that they do. And that would probably involve paying somebody a lot more than you guys pay me to know that kind of stuff.
So you guys give samples of those statements so that we would know exactly what you're looking for?
I know. I mean, that book is the statements, and it's preparing countywide. And there's just a lot of information and consolidations and numbers that get put in there that come from other places.
There are complex legal disclosures about things like per's liabilities that are based on actuarial evaluations, trying to determine how old folks are going to get, how sick they're going to get, that are, they're complex. Where I was going to go with the end of that statement was you can absolutely save some money on one end, but you usually end up picking it up in another area.
Which is paying your financial person a lot more.
So finding someone with that expertise would be difficult, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Especially coming to little old Curry County.
You wouldn't have to be looking for a job, would you?
He was.
Yeah, for $60,000 a year, I'm sure he's going to be right on it.
From Roadmaster, so.
Alrighty.
Sorry about that, guys.
No problem. No problem. Now, there is another way that's a little bit more realistic.
Okay, let's hear that.
Yeah.
For big bucks?
This is, I couldn't say. It would be a conversation with Roy Rogers. He's the, that's where the buck stops with all things audit, is with him. I have seen other entities that we work with, if they sufficiently change their operations so that many things become digital, that we can do our audit without necessarily needing to drive down or to spend so much time in person, or to potentially have less people working for a certain number of days, that absolutely can bring the price down. But it involves many things with many departments becoming more digitized and having significant amounts of documentation available through software. So if it's something that folks are already considering, it's definitely a point in the positive. You know, if you're already considering looking at some different software or changing the way departments work with some documentation digitally, it can be another point. Hey, we could actually use this to make the audit a little bit more swift and potentially less costly. But again, those processes are not easily entered into.
Okay, so basically, you're talking about travel time and that sort of thing?
Exactly.
Well, there's a good subject.
I have another comment on that. Two years ago, I went out for an RFP on our audit services. At the time, we were spending about $30,000 to $40,000 more than we're paying this audit firm. And so I think that one of the things you can do is periodically go out for your RFP. There's two kinds of things going on with that. One is, you do get the best price every time you do that, but you also lose continuity with your auditors. So if they're not, if you change auditors every three years, it's quite a learning curve for them to get up to where, how you do your work, how you have your statements, how you have your work. So it takes them a while to get used to, a new auditor to get used to your entity. And so having a different auditor every three years, I would not recommend. I do believe that we did get a very good quote from Polly Rogers when they were awarded the audit services. And so it's good for another, I think it's three years. So this is the third year of the RFP. If you want to go out for another RFP next spring, that's up to you.
Louise, as I recall, there were two types of audits going on, and we were paying significantly more.
We were paying significantly more just for the audit, and then we were also paying Polly Rogers to do the financial statements.
Oh, so we had two entities doing this stuff. Okay.
Yes, and then trying to connect them, the two of them together. So when we went out for the RFP, when we did go out that time, we stressed that that we would have them do both the audit and financial statements, and we wanted a quote or a bid on, based on that.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I guess I just have one small one. Do you compare financial health with like-sized communities at all?
That's a great question. You're kind of talking about what we were mentioning a little bit before with that practice of benchmarking.
Yeah.
We absolutely recommend that, and there are a number of different organizations that we work with that have different ways of doing so with varying levels of certainty. However, particularly for our municipal clients, our nonprofits and our for-profits are a little bit different. But for our municipal clients, because such a significant revenue stream is based off of property tax and is based off of grants, and those things are very community-specific, it's difficult to get good, actionable information because you're not comparing apples to apples as much. It's a little bit more apples to oranges. That said, we can definitely provide some things that we've seen other districts and other cities and counties do. Most of the larger districts, cities and counties that we work with who have explored things like this, who've kind of formed a committee, looked at various options and had them report back. After all the work was done, they said, eh, it's not worth it. But that's not a decision for us to say. That's definitely for the board and for management to decide.
So you audit how many different counties?
I personally only work with Curry, but Roy Rogers and Polly Rogers, I'd say, I think we're around like eight or so.
Okay, the reason I'm asking is I'm thinking of our assessment cycle. We are, what, 17, 18 years behind? How do we compare to other counties?
So that was the reason that we gave the significant deficiency that we did. So I would say that it's something that we consider a significant deficiency, and I think that's all I'm allowed to say about that.
Okay.
Any other questions? Is that all you have, sir?
That is.
All right. This meeting is adjourned.
Great. And then are we doing the? Okay. I've got good news for y'all. Got a surprise.
All right.
So for the Public Transit District, everything that we've talked about.
I got to come on for the record.
Oh, sorry.
All right. So it is now 1450. We are coming into session for a Curry County Public Transit Service District Board of Commissioners meeting to discuss the public transit financials, I guess, for the year of 2018. Call this meeting to order and ask for approval of the agenda if there are no amendments.
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Further discussion? Roll, please.
Christopher Gold.
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce.
Yes.
Chair Pash.
All right.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, so it is your floor, sir. You've been here before. I know you somewhere.
Just a little bit. Honorable members of the board, it's my pleasure to present the findings of the audit report for fiscal year ending 2018 for Curry County Public Transit District. I've got good news for y'all. Everything that was discussed for the county, because the county administers the Public Transit District in-house, using the same fund structure, using all the same, you know, equipment and personnel, the findings that we just discussed, the conversations that we just had, all apply with one important exception, which is everything that related to single audit, AKA those significant deficiencies that we touched on for single audit. Those do not apply because they didn't get a large enough federal grant. So it's the same except less. So everything that we discussed is. So, everything that we discussed is, still applies. Did you have any additional questions on the specifics of the Transit District?
Any further questions? Is that all you have, sir?
That is.
This meeting is adjourned. See everyone at 5 o'clock.
Hello, gentlemen?
Yes, ma'am.
We're trying to schedule an exit review.
All right.
So, any time you're ready now.
Give me five minutes.
Okay.
All right.